Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming. Cold night. We're not in Buffalo. Eighty inches of snow they're supposed to get by Thursday. Eighty. Doing lake effect. Yeah, so we're lucky here in wonderful cold spring.
You can't complain about a thing.
We opened the meeting at 6:30 for our monthly book read. We're reading Leadership on the Line by Heifetz and Linsky. We're doing a group discussion about this right before every workshop meeting. And if anyone from the public wants to come and participate, you're welcome. Thank you, Jennifer Wilson, for moderating this evening. All right, before we start, just a couple of logistic things. As you know, we are using BoardDocs, which is a document-agenda management system. So what we get is what everybody else has access to online. It's a web-based system. We're trying to phase into the point where everything will be electronic and we won't have big stacks of agendas. But until we get to that point, we're going to be printing agendas. We have them. But basically, everything can be accessed through BoardDocs. So anyone here who has a smartphone, an iPad, or a laptop can sign on to the Haldane Guest Wireless Network and then go right to BoardDocs and you'll get everything that we get. So we think it's a great way to manage the process, manage the documents, but more importantly, increase transparency. So that's kind of what this is all about. Just a couple of quick thank-yous. This past Thursday, we had our, I believe, first annual spaghetti dinner, though I hear it wasn't the first annual, but it's almost the first annual. It was Thursday, the 13th, and it was put on by the Wellness Committee along with the elementary school. Julia Sniffin was one of the spearheads. We had over 220 meals that were served. They raised over $1,300 for the farm-to-school program. And from what I heard at the Wellness Committee meeting yesterday, everybody had an absolute blast. So kudos to Julia and some other people who helped out on this. Sandy McKelvey, who coordinated the whole wellness farm-to-school concept. Carolyn Lowellin arranged donations from Glenwood. Corey Reister handled all the decorations. Lauren Kalika, who's our cafeteria person, who's doing a phenomenal job, by the way. Beacon Bread, PTA, Fishkill Farms, Hudson Valley Fresh, and I put in some cheese. So thank you, everybody, for that. It was a great event, and I'm hearing we may see another one of these in the spring or something like it. So good job, Julia, as always. This past weekend, we had two of our Haldane student athletes. Their teams go to the state championships, which is kind of a big deal. Our volleyball team, and we have two of our volleyball players here. Melissa Trangalli, Maisie Curda. They're lobbying for a later start time. They're not necessarily here for volleyball. They lost a five-set match by two points, and I have to tell you, that was one of the greatest sporting events I've ever seen. It was phenomenal. It was amazing. Neck and neck, and it was just great. So congratulations, kids. And also, congratulations to the soccer team. The girls' soccer team brought the first state championship for soccer in school history. This is the championship. And there, I know we're going crazy. And special thanks to Gary Benassol, the coach. He's been a fixture around here on the sports scene for many, many years, whether he's cutting grass, lining fields, PA announcer, now he's a coach. He drove the bus. So I thought it was great that he finally can hang that one on his ass.
And they gave it their all and did a great job.
Yes. So all good stuff. We're going to recognize a little bit later on at another date and do some fun stuff with all that kind of stuff, because that's kind of cool stuff that happens in a small community. Tonight, we're going to talk about two presentations. Tom's going to go first. We're going to talk a little bit about concussions. And then we're going to do the later start time. And I just want to preempt the later start time conversation, that this is step one of what I believe potentially can be a long, thorough process. So we're not here to make any decisions tonight. We're here to listen, absorb some information, and then I think we're going to come back to this probably in a month and then start having some dialogue as to how it works. I've done a bunch of research that I'm going to pipe in after our little panel presents. So I think it's going to be informative, and I'm actually looking forward to it. So it should be a good conversation. So with that said, I will pass over to Tom Cunningham. And Tom, by the way, you did a great job this weekend managing both
Thank you.
...teams and everything that goes with it.
There's a lot of moving parts, but it all worked out. Basically, I think I was brought here tonight just to discuss how we handle or how we educate our coaches or prepare our coaches for injury situations. I know that the topic was concussions. Basically, what I do is for, and you guys have this all in your documents, is our first thing is our district regulation that basically breaks down for our coaches, you know, our procedures and what we expect of them in any type of situation if there is a suspected concussion. Okay, that's the regulation that's handed to the coaches. Another important one is within the sports forms that the students and the parents have to hand out, there's a checklist here for the student or for the athlete, the athlete's signature and the parent's signature, that they understand what the signs and symptoms would be of a concussion. That's an important piece that we added, I think, three years ago. Also, within your document, we have, again, when concussions, I guess it's been four or five years now, remember, concussions came onto the scene. We had some major things. Well, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association came out with some guidelines that we've used. You know, we've taken pieces of this and put it in our regulations. So that's also within your documents. Also, the coaches get a checklist, just some things that they should, that I recommend they carry in their med kits with them, you know, their medical kits that they need to bring to every sporting event, every practice. Basically, they can kind of do their own little analysis right there of, you know, if they suspect any type of head injury. You know, a big saying is, "When in doubt, take them out." Again, it can't be emphasized enough. It's pretty much been hit home. Anytime we talk about any type of head injury, automatic, we need them to stay out. No questions, you know, that's it. And then we get them evaluated. And then I added a concussion, another checklist, from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. And the last part is every coach, every two years, has to take what they call a Heads-Up Concussion in Youth Sports Certificate. This is done through the Center for Disease Control. It's about a 20-minute video that educates the coaches on just some reminders of how to handle concussions and some things that may take place. Again, that's every two years. This was put into place two years ago by the state to make sure that all your coaches are educated about the signs and symptoms of concussions. So that's basically how our coaches are educated on it. And I think everything's, you know, our nurse is highly involved in it. Any type of return to play is done through the physicians. You know, I think we've done everything we need to do. We've done our due diligence, is how I feel. So if you have any questions, go ahead.
Tom, just one question. Can you talk a little bit about that impact testing program and how that process works?
Well, how it works is we test. The kids say, it's about a 30-minute-long test, and it's a baseline test. So they're asked a certain amount of questions, a certain amount of time. What happens is it's kept on file, and if they do have a concussion or concussion symptoms and they go to the doctor, what we've done is we've had them retake the test and then have the doctor look at the results. Now, what's, now, impact is not the only mechanism used by doctors. We've only had probably one or two doctors request that. A lot of them use their own techniques of return to play. But it's, we've used it, you know, one or two. It's something that's still, it's important. But again, we have, if a physician requests it, then we will have them take the test again after a concussion or concussion symptoms, or if they feel there was a concussion.
Good. Thanks.
Yeah?
Tom, I have a question about our helmets. I saw this report recently about how there's different helmets and they have different safety mechanisms, like some helmets are better than others, I guess. So I get, my question to you is-
Helmets meaning football helmets, or?
Football helmets, yeah, sorry. How are we equipment-wise? Do you feel like our helmets are up to snuff? Are they the right standard?
All right, well, I'll let you know what our procedure is for at the end of every season. For example, tomorrow, what's going to happen is we have a, what they call a reconditioning company called Riedel, who's, if you ever watch professional football, you'll see the name on the back of the helmet. They inspect and certify your helmets every year. And helmets have about a 10- to 12-year lifespan. So for example, we're going to have 10 helmets that are going to be thrown away. So what we did to prepare for that is we knew it'd be a budget expense, so we paid for five this year, and then we're going to pay for five next year. So basically, they are certified. If a helmet is no good, they, boom, throw it out. Here, you need to get another one. It's all done in a report. I have the reports in my office. Again, it's, we are up to the, we are at, you know, we're being-
Code.
Yeah, we're up to code. We're, yeah, the whole nine yards.
Yeah. Great.
I know it came up at the Safety Committee meeting, but, and I know some other districts do it. It would be kind of cool if we could somehow, maybe once a year, and the Booster Club, obviously, the Blue Devil Booster Club would be the mechanism, do kind of like a workshop on sports and safety.
I'm glad you bring that up, because Patty Pelican was in the audience today. Her and I were going back and forth today about setting up. Patty, you want to come up and explain? I mean, if you want to, you'll be able to explain it more, but why don't you come up and explain what we discussed today? This happened to be a coincidence, by the way.
I tell you guys, very choreographed. Patty comes right in.
Hi. Oh, my gosh, no. So hi, I'm Patty Pelican. I work for Hudson Valley Hospital Center, and I do community outreach. So I organize physician lectures in communities and health fairs and things like that. And it was so funny, because today, on my list, one of the things they wanted me to do was, you know, how can we reach out to Haldane Community, Patty Pelican? I said, "Oh, yeah, well, I'll help you with that." And so I just reached out to Tom and said, you know, is there anything sort of like a hot-button issue? And he said, "Concussions still are." And, you know, just a little bit of background, I have a son who graduated in 2012, and in 2010, he had a major concussion. It was sort of at the beginning of all of this awareness of concussions. And, you know, at that time, he was sent back into play, and, you know, it wasn't handled properly. But what I will say is that that was because of, you know, sort of the information available about concussions at that point, and I think we've come so far. So that's really a good thing. So anyway, we can provide a physician to talk about concussions, maybe a, I'm pushing for a neurologist, because I want an expert in the field. And with the Booster Club, we could do different things with sports injuries. We have PT right down, you know, on 9D at the Cold Spring Medical Pavilion. So I'll be in discussion with Tom and you, Joe, however I can help. Okay?
I think it would be great. And really frame the conversation, because it really isn't just about football. And I know there's a perception-
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
-that, you know, we deal with it in all sports. We have it, the issue in my business, I'm in the tennis business, and it happens a lot with people just falling. But I think it would be great. And if we could do that with the hospital, I think that would be fabulous.
Yep.
Great. Good. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Patty. Great. Okay. Late start times. How do you want us to?
Would you like to do the vote first before we start the discussion, or you want to wait till later?
Do the what?
The vote for BOSIs?
Oh, we could do it later.
Okay. Okay. So for anybody who's in the audience that may have an interest in asking a question or would like to speak, if you wouldn't mind giving your name to the district clerk, we have about a two-minute limit for conversation, and depending on how many people sign up, we may have some flexibility there. Whenever you'd like. And what's about to happen is we're going to ask the board to sit in the seats that are on the front row, and we're going to ask our panel to come up here to, so you can hear what they have to say and ask questions when the presentation's over. So if the board wouldn't mind changing their places and if our panel-
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to actually be over there. So-
My name's Elise LaRocco. I'm on the Safety Committee, and we brought this up. And I was the one who suggested having an informational meeting, because unfortunately, there's nothing you can do to prevent a concussion. Helmets don't stop a concussion. They stop fractures. And the NFL has come out and said, and the Academy of Pediatrics also, that actually high school football is more dangerous than college or NFL, and that's because the brains aren't developed. So the, so since there's nothing we can do, the only thing we can do is what we've done so far with good regulations and awareness. And I think we should have an annual mandatory meeting with parents, coaches, and students who want to go into those sports. And I think get an expert, like whether it's Patty's or someone, definitely a neurologist who's aware of it. And I think it would be great to have students who've had concussions. Because I know, I had a concussion when I was on a high school field trip. Skied after my fourth trip down the hill, lost all memory. And you know what I did? Because I was 16, I didn't tell the teacher, and I went back up and skied the rest of the day. So you can't expect students, especially teens, their mindset, to say, "Hey, Coach, I'm not feeling well. Keep me out." That's just not a realistic teen attitude. So that's why I think if they hear it from their peers, that it'd be really fantastic to say, "You know what? It's okay if I sit out a game, if I tell my coach how I feel." And especially if they know that there could be damages, they could be out of school for a month or so. So that's my opinion, and I just think we have to be proactive with education, since even the NFL has nothing to prevent concussions. So it's not like we're doing anything wrong. But we've got, the only thing we can do at this point until technology comes up is to educate, and I think it should be mandatory. And like I said, with parents, coaches, and students who are going to participate in those sports. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Bowers, and for those of you who I haven't met, I'm the new superintendent here. And tonight, we're beginning to take a look at something that is very timely and a discussion that has been repeated many a time since I've been in education. It is a very complicated conversation. It's a very complicated topic. And because of all the complexities that are involved in it, very few schools have actually taken on the challenge of modifying start times. But we are here tonight to look at all the information, to share some of the information with you, to determine what our next steps will be. If we are looking into going into a study, that will be a decision of the board. And so we're framing the issue this evening. We're going to give you an opportunity to talk to the panel, and I'll have them introduce themselves in a minute, to hear about some of the timely issues and the things that are related and what we would have to consider, and all of the above. So tonight's conversation is, should Haldane consider a later start time for the high school and the middle school students? So Jen, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself in your position?
I'm Jennifer Wilson, the Director of Special Remedial and Assessment Services and Chief Information Officer.
I'm Brian Almond, the high school principal.
Tom Cunningham, Director of Health, Physical Education, Athletics, and Dean of Students.
I'm Mike Twardy, Director of Facilities, Operations and Maintenance, and Transportation.
Or you can use that one. You can say you're Diana Bowers.
Brent Harrington, the elementary and middle school principal.
Julia Sniffin, the elementary and middle school assistant principal.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to start by asking a question. Do you know this student? So we have many times seen kids that are feeling like that young man is feeling. Very tired in the morning, comes to school, has the traditional kind of early morning lull. And we are here to see if there are ways of modifying that lull. And we are also here because of a recent study that has come out. Recently, the American Academy of Pediatrics published a research paper where they looked at a number of research studies and compiled the research studies to bring you the information that will help us make a decision as to whether we move forward or not. So in a nutshell, what this research shows, first of all, the overarching issue is that adolescents at this point are plagued with chronic sleep issues. And the reason why the research is here and the reason why the research has been repeated over and over again is because if you look at brain-based research, you know that the students in the middle and high school years, they have something called the circadian rhythm. And it's basically the time that their body wants to shut down at night and wants to open up in the morning. And this rhythm is what helps them regulate their time. When students are in middle school and when students graduate from college, their circadian rhythms are different than they are at the high school level. And they actually can be modified for up to two hours. So they either, they want to get up two hours later or potentially two hours later, and they want to go to bed two hours later. So what we have to do is we have to look at if, whether or not there is a way for the circadian rhythm and the school day to somehow be more closely aligned. What happens with the phased delay is that there are a number of different medical and learning issues that are correlated with it. And if the student does not get somewhere between 8.5 and 9.5 hours of sleep a night, they may have an impact in these areas. This study also shows that there's an average of seven hours of sleep or less for teenagers. Delayed start time is an effective way to help remedy this issue. So what is the research showing? It's showing that there are actually benefits to modifying start times. And in this study, they actually gave two examples. One was a start time of 7:15 that went to 8:40. And in this situation, they found that the students slept about an hour later or had an additional hour of sleep each day. The other one, which was kind of questionable, I couldn't quite figure out how they were working this, but it went from 8:00 to 8:30, and these students actually got an additional 45 minutes a day. So something that happened in the sleep and wake and what they were doing in their cycles actually increased it by not 30 minutes, but 45. The research also says that it is the best practice to have the start time at 8:30 or later, if possible. But they also understand that there are many different factors that play against this. So basically, the guidance is, if you can make it later, make it later. Okay, so what are the potential problems of lack of sleep? And you wouldn't think of some of these being issues for students, but the first one that they list is cardiovascular disease. There are cardiovascular issues that actually result from students not getting enough sleep. And that seven hours versus eight and a half or nine and a half is an example of this. Type 2 diabetes, obesity, depression, and mood disorders. What more sleep will provide? Increase the quality of life. It decreases the level of fatigue. It increases academic achievement. And if you would like to take a look at this study, it's going to be on BoardDocs, so we can get you copies of it. But again, this is from the Journal of American Academy of Pediatrics. And it also reduces the risk of depression and other health-related disorders. And at this point, it is essential that we at least consider the data, we consider the information that's presented in this, and we decide whether or not we are going to look at this as a committee structure. So tonight's topics, we're going to be looking at the current schedules at the high school, the middle school, the elementary, and the cafeteria, because this is one of the parts that becomes extremely problematic in figuring this out. And we're going to look at academic, extracurricular, and logistics. So, Mrs. Sniffin?
Well, actually, you're probably okay there. So I'm- So I am going to talk about, and they'll jump in if they see that it's necessary to jump in. Before I get started, I think it's important, and again, the information we're sharing right now is like reasons not to do it. It's not reasons to do it. It's strictly the facts. It's strictly the information in terms of where we are right now, a snapshot of today, so that I think people kind of have an understanding of the framework. So if this is something we continue to look at and explore, people have a sense of the dynamics of where we're starting. So to talk a little bit about scheduling, currently at Haldane School District, we are functioning on three different schedules. While the times are only two different schedules, our middle school and high school start at 7:30. The standard day ends at 2:15. There is something called 10th period, which is extra help period. That's middle school, high school. The elementary day starts at approximately 8:45. The students need to be in the school, and their day ends at approximately 3 o'clock. However, there are three separate schedules while there are two different timeframes. The high school is on an eight-period, four-day rotational schedule. The middle school is on a standard A-day, B-day, which is a two-day schedule. And the elementary school is on a five-day schedule, Monday through Friday. So you have high school on the four or eight cycle, depending on how you look at it, the middle school on a two, A and B, and elementary on a five-day. So it's not a perfect love where everything just fits together. There are three different schedules. Up first is the high school schedule. So in addition to these three different schedules, we, oh, I'm all the way back to high school. I haven't even started yet, Anne. So there we go. So we're on the high school schedule. And what you see in front of you, again, as we mentioned, the day starts at 7:33, and the standard day ends at 2:15 approximately. We also have shared staff, which our amount of shared staff has decreased over the years since I've been here, but we still have a lot of shared staff. So when you look at the high school schedule right now, you'll notice that they have three periods every day before lunch that are approximately 55 minutes long. Then they have their lunch, and then they have another three periods in the afternoon. You'll also notice that a period is dropped in the morning every day, and a period is dropped in the afternoon every day. So on blue A days, they go one through three in the morning, then they have lunch, then they go six, seven, and eight. If you go to the next day, white B, you'll notice three is no longer there in the morning, and you'll notice that eight is no longer in the afternoon. So you can kind of see how the schedule works, and it rotates around. So it's longer periods of time, allowing for different types of instruction to take place in those 55 minutes. You do drop one class in the cycle here. The morning where you see the blue, it's important to recognize, there are a lot of teachers in that mix in the morning that do not, that will teach middle school later on. So the morning is where the high school takes the shared staff people. So your foreign language teachers, your art, your health, your band class will be in the morning in that rotation, because again, the middle school's on a different schedule. So we need them at a different time. You'll also see at the end of the day, there's the blue during 10th period, because high school band and chorus can also be offered during 10th period, which those people are shared not only with the middle school, but they're also shared with the elementary school. So the schedules all have to fit. If you switch to middle school, you'll see, we do have an A-day, B-day, right? We talked about that. You'll only see one day up there right now, but the areas where you have blue, there might be band or chorus, there might be technology or those courses that might meet every other day. The blue, again, are the times right now where we have shared staff in the middle school schedule. Some of the shared staff are shared with elementary, some of the shared staff are shared with the high school. The reason why we kind of bring this up is you notice that 7:33 slot to 8:15 slot, that is a big slot for our middle school students to get access to those shared staff people with the elementary. Again, not saying this is a good thing or a bad thing, it's just logistics that we have to consider as we move forward. What would that look like? You'll see all of our core subjects in the middle school are currently taught in the morning. We do have teams in the middle school. We do have teams in the middle school, which we worked very hard to put in place so that the kids all have the same teachers for subjects, so the teachers can get together at common planning time, to kind of be sure they're evaluating the whole child and keeping an eye out on the whole child, because everybody shares those same children. We do have a unit lunch, just like high school does, which I think we've seen a lot of advantages with having the unit lunch, where all kids are eating at the same time, people are available for extra help, you can have different clubs and meetings at that time, so that can be helpful. If we flip to elementary, again, elementary is on a five-day cycle. Most of you, I think, know that there are three homerooms per grade level, right? Kindergarten has three sections, there's three sections in first, second, all the way through now, no more bubble class. But typically, our, you can see here, the special schedules for the elementary kids. So our fifth grade kids go to special from 8:50 to 9:30, so forth and so on. Now again, that's not five days a week where every teacher is teaching. So your Jean Sendali, you're our art teacher, and you're teaching fifth grade, you know there's only three sections of fifth grade art, so three days a week, she has fifth graders at that time. And then you'll go to the next period, there's three sections of the second grade, so three days a week, she'll have them at second grade at that time. The reason the schedule looks like this, which we did approximately four years ago now, is so that our teachers can have common planning time. So if you're a second grade teacher, when I was a teacher, I didn't have, I had one day a week where I could meet with my fourth grade teachers to talk about best practices, to talk about what's working, to talk about, now, all of our elementary teachers with this schedule have common planning time where they can meet while their kids are at special to discuss different things. So something to consider again as we move forward, something that we've been valuing and that we see the benefit of having, that we want to make sure when we start tweaking schedules, we're careful to let go of certain things, if in fact, that needs to be done.
Maybe if I can just clarify-
Yeah, absolutely.
That common planning time now is presently at least three days a week where grade-level teachers have that common planning time, and in many, at many grade levels, it's five days a week.
The other thing I think it's important to mention on the elementary schedules, which you don't see up here, is we've built in over the last few years, something called extended learning time. And kids who might need some extra supports, whether it's speech and language, occupational therapy, reading supports, math supports, and in some cases, even some enrichment that we're looking to put in place in terms of chess during the school day and different things, we have built that in to be a standard time where there's no new instruction going on in the elementary classrooms across the grade level for 30 minutes at, every day, five days a week. And that's been very beneficial for kids who might need some services, not to be missing science or social studies, to be sure there's no new instruction during that time period. And we can be pulling kids that have similar needs from different homeroom classes at the same time, knowing there's no new instruction at the grade level. So it's an important thing, I think, as well, that we want to make sure that we maintain as we start this dialogue and conversation about change in start time. You'll also see, elementary, all of these are in blue, because everybody's shared staff when you're in special areas in the elementary school. You might be Ms. Cornaccio, which is the K-12 music teacher, so you're on all three schedules. You might be a PE teacher, like Tony Caldiero this year, who is elementary, middle school, and one high school class, so he's also all three this year. Let's see, who else? Tom Licassio is middle school, high school, Jean Sendali is elementary and sixth grade. So a lot of people are on all three schedules. The next one is interesting, that we'll need to just consider and take a look at. The times that our cafeteria is in use, and some of the parents in the audience were here when there was a 9:45 lunchtime. So we're actually like very happy that we don't have that lunchtime still, you know, it's come at some expense. We do have some unit lunch, which I think is fabulous for both the high school and the middle school, which has allowed us to do a 10:30 as our earliest start time for lunch. But you will see that our lunch goes all the way to 1:40. So if we talk about changing the day and changing times, we have to consider the lunches. Currently, our students have, in the elementary school, 30 minutes to eat, to eat lunch, and I don't know, you know, that's just, again, piece of information to know.
And I think it's important, Julia, to let parents know that our cafeteria will not hold more than it was presently in there, so it's not-
Yes. That's pretty much capacity. With two grade levels in the cafeteria at one time, you know, is approximately, could be 150 students at any given time. In the middle school and high school, we're at capacity. So if we turn to the next slide, there are some just considerations, among most of them I already mentioned, if you can take a quick read through these considerations as we move forward. We divided them up into three different categories. You have the academic, we have the extracurricular, and then the last slide will be just kind of the logistical pieces to think about. And while you're reading these, you know, this is just the beginning, you know, we were talking today before we came in here, and together as a group, we've only had two conversations on the topic. So it's not like we've been spending a lot, a lot of time, like, looking at this and talking about it. We had two extensive conversations, we had some individual conversations with Dr. Bowers. So we too are right at the beginning of scratching the surface on this topic. One of the things that Mr. Harrington and I have spent a lot of time discussing is the third bullet down, which is consistency in start time. And, you know, we were just having conversations of the, like, what ifs, right? All of these what ifs. I'm sure you guys in high school have quite a few what ifs right now. What if we could sleep in until 9:30 every day, or 10 o'clock? But one of the what ifs we were discussing is, we are running two different buildings on two different time schedules. So, you know, we're here quite early in the morning, greeting at 7:30, and then we have another wave of greeting at 8:30. You know, logistically, I think something to consider is, yes, we potentially maybe even consider looking at elementary and middle school being at a same time slot, you know? So while we're throwing all these conversations out there, you know, and there's a lot of discussion, you know, what it looks like, who knows what it could look like? So just something in terms of consistency in start time to think about.
So another bit of research that we are citing tonight, basically comes from the National Sleep Foundation. And the National Sleep Foundation has made suggestions, along with the Academy of Pediatrics, on the things that school districts should consider and do if they are to look at modifying start times in the morning. So the first bullet, obviously, is to create a panel, so this is the first step in the process. Once the board has the opportunity to ask the questions, and the public has the opportunity to ask questions, we will decide if we're going to move to the next step, which is to form a committee to determine if this is in the best interest of kids. So what do you think? Big smiles. Okay. And then the third is if we do formulate a committee to look at this variable, or the changes in these variables, we need to look at timelines, we need to set some goals, and we need to consider all the issues that will be facing us if this is the direction we are going to go. So at this point, if we'd like to open it to the board for discussion, if there's any questions that you have?
Can you guys talk a little bit about the 10th period concept for middle school and high school? In some of the districts that I've poked around that actually did make the change, and there are not a lot of them in New York State, it seemed most of them didn't have that 10th period piece.
Yeah.
So, I can start to dig in on that?
Question was about 10th period. Mr. Curdo has mentioned-
Talk a little bit about what it's used for and its value, where a lot of districts that have made this later start time, it, to me, seemed easier because it didn't have anything in that slot. You just push the whole day back.
Yeah, absolutely. What I learned, and I learned very on, early on in my tenure here, is that 10th period is really just sacred. It's a part of Haldane that is very unique to a lot of different school districts, and that, you know, some folks would ask the question, well, how many kids really do stay after school and utilize that time for this or for that? And, you know, I did some informal polling of teachers to just make sure that my own anecdotal observations weren't off in terms of my walking around the building after school. And the answer is that it's highly subscribed to 10th period, and the high achievers and the struggling students alike make great use of 10th period. And without it, we wouldn't be able to administer our arts programs in chorus and band the way that we do now. We have over a third of our students in the high school that are involved in one or the other of those. And, you know, there would be challenges associated with making sure that we're preserving a 10th period, which is, in a word, sacred to the culture and the success of our district.
Certainly in the middle school, I would echo some of the same comments of Mr. Rahm. It is sacred time in the day, in which it is a non-instructional time, but it is a time in which I would say at least half of our middle school students are receiving some extra help and extra assistance, and that is both high achieving students, as Mr. Rahm notes in the high school, as well as struggling students in the middle school.
I would just add that for us in the middle school right now, a lot of our clubs and our activities take place during those times, from 2:15 to 3, because our students do ride the elementary buses home at 3 o'clock. So parents don't have to worry about transportation home at that time, so the kids who want to do intramurals on Tuesdays and Thursdays might not be playing extracurricular sports, I'm sorry, interscholastic sports, they stay for that on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Also, a lot of our, you know, whether it's the SAT club, whether it's the Ego Club, there are meetings during that time, the yearbook, the newspaper, so there are quite a few clubs that take place during 10th period as well, to consider as we move forward.
I also think we need to consider the impact on special education, as 10th period really is sacred for a lot of our students who receive special education, and if we didn't have that available, we might have to ratchet up the amount of support we provide during the school day.
Is there a sense that part of the, is there a sense that part of the appeal of 10th period is that it's after school? You know, if it was before school, like, as a zero period, would it, in your opinions, that, I mean, off the hook here, do you feel like that would be less appealing to our students?
I think transportation is the piece. If you provide the transportation, they will come. If the transportation is not provided, it's going to be a lot harder for them to come and take advantage of that.
I'm not sure, from a high school perspective, I'm not sure. You know, I haven't done enough of a poll of students to see how it would really affect our rate of students taking advantage of that opportunity. I'm really unsure about that. One thing I also wanted to add, for Tom, is that even though sometimes we have parents that challenge us and say, you know, I don't know if they're sticking to that 3 o'clock rule, by and large, you know, none of our sports begin until 3:00 PM. So that adds to how that space is sacred and, you know, widely adhered to, and everybody has that opportunity. And if you're not getting extra help at that time, you know, most of our students are working really, really hard, and having that time for a snack to re, you know, calorize themselves and get back at it, and just take a rest and breathe it with their friends socially, it's very important to, again, the culture and success of the district.
So, so when I look at all the stuff you talk about with the schedule, what am I missing in the sense of, why, I mean, obviously, there's a lot to consider. Transportation, contractual issues with times, with teacher start times and other faculty members. Why is it not, but all this other stuff that you brought to the table, why, if you just said, let's for argument's sake, say, okay, high school starts at 8:15, and elementary starts at 9:45, why doesn't just everything just shift 45 minutes? Why doesn't everything just fall into place, like, okay, so now everything is 45 minutes later? Like, everything you just talked about wouldn't be affected, other than the fact that you would have lunch at 2 o'clock for that last group?
If everything shifted?
Well, if everything, well, because if you're starting later, so wouldn't just-
If everything just shifted, everything can shift.
So, so, so I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why these are the issues.
There is some significant concerns that we should be aware of with respect to interscholastic sports and start times.
Well, those, absolutely, those are the things. Into the sports times, any contract issues, parents who have to get the kids out the door so they can get to work, those issues. I'm just, I'm just wondering why these issues that you bring to the table become issues if you just switch-
Well, and I don't think we're bringing them to the table to say that these are the issues. We're bringing them to the table just to say, this is where we currently are, not that they're issues.
Right.
Because I don't think anybody here says these are issues.
Right.
These are just so that the public has kind of the knowledge of the current structure and status and where we are. And I think, like, right now, like we said, we've really only had two conversations about this. And I think, you know, some of our conversations are, what if elementary goes earlier, middle school, high school goes later? What if everything stays the same, exactly what you said, and everything just shifts 45 minutes? What if? So there's a lot of, like, what ifs, but nobody really knows what's, what's the target right now, and it hasn't been established. So I think what you're seeing are not, like, the problems, they're just, here's the facts. This is where we are.
Sure.
And I think, just from what I've researched, what they're all recommending, and by all the organizations that are really advocating for this, from a mental health, from a medical, educational standpoint, they're recommending that this conversation take place between 12 and 24 months. And the ones that apparently are successful in making that transition are doing it methodically and doing it in that timeline, and that's when it's working, because everything has a cause and effect relationship. And I think once you start digging below the surface, and there's a couple of good studies I'm going to reference that I think people should read, you start thinking of things and hearing of things and finding out about things that you would never have thought about that are issues. And what they're suggesting is if someone really does want to make this a priority or a reality, you got to go through the time and the motions and the effort, and they're suggesting 12 to 24 months to do it, to do it properly. Because if you don't, you're destined to fail, and it's going to be a disaster.
One of the things we talked about today was just the budget timeline, and the implications of the budget, and the implications on special education. You know, Jen was bringing up, you know, kids' IEPs and minutes on IEPs. So there's a lot of logistics that we need to have in place prior to budget season even starting, so it's, it is extensive.
And so when we were talking today, one of the things that we were discussing is the timeline. If we were to go into a committee and we were to have these methodical conversations over an extended period of time, the time that we would actually be looking to recommend one way or the other would probably be next fall, and before the budget season next year. So this is, at the earliest, 2016, September of 2016, that we'd be looking at this.
Sorry, girls.
Can I just, can I, can I just, Dr. Bowers, wait, one second, Peter, one sec. I, I don't know, I'm not saying I disagree with that at all, but, you know, since this is a conversation, I don't know if we should be so quick to, and I'm not, I'm not, this is, I'm not advocating for anything here, again, it's just the facts.
Just the facts.
Okay? That, I don't know if we should be so quick to say, okay, 2016 is the earliest. I think that should be on the table as well. I mean, I look at my school district, you know, in New York City, the largest school district in the country, they did a radical change in time in the contract in a month, okay? They announced it in May, and then in September, boom, it was, in fact, it was a lot of problems, and I'm not advocating that we take a month to do it, okay? But, I'm just saying, no, if they, you know, it, but it's the largest school district in the country, okay? So, I'm just saying that it shouldn't, I don't know if we should just, I'm not saying we should do it, if we're going to do it in September 2015, but I don't know if that should be so quick to say, you know what, if we're going to do it, we're not going to do it for at least two years. So I'm just saying that that should not necessarily be out there, but that's just my opinion.
And I just wanted to share that we begin annual reviews in February, and if the Bocey's Tech Center start time doesn't shift, then that will impact IEPs. And so I need to have that information to have the IEPs be accurate for February 1st. So that's one of the domino effects, like, we don't want anything to stand in the way if- Like, we don't want anything to stand in the way if we decide to do this, but we have to think through all the logistics, and that's one of the important logistics to think of.
One of the other things, too, is I'm sure Ann is going to be giving out the budget calendar very soon. And so, we're going to be launching into budget season within the next month or two. And so, it would be very difficult for us to have enough in place at that point to really look at budgetary impacts. So, we're not saying that nothing is possible. We're saying that we really need to make sure that we do it well if we're going to do it, so it doesn't become problematic.
So, I'm sure that the science behind this is sound. My concern, or my suspicion, is that we have a lot of kids who are heavily scheduled. And if you're saying, okay, you're going to start school, say, an hour later so you can get an hour extra sleep, does that really mean that they're going to get an hour extra sleep? Or does it just mean they're going to go to sleep an hour later? Because they've got so much else that they're trying to pack in. So, to what extent do you think, in addition to changing the start time, we need some kind of a cultural shift or a realignment of expectations of what kids can handle?
I think there was a comment in the study about that.
Yeah, that's right. That was right in the study hall, or in the study, I call it the "stay up later" myth. And I was fascinated, because that was my immediate inclination, right? And they really systematically debunked that and said that, you know what, they actually do keep the same bedtime, and they don't stay up one hour later. That being said, the article, or the study, the AAP study also said, and they made a big deal about, that this is a systematic countermeasure. They kept saying that systematic countermeasures delaying start time. But they also very clearly recognized that there are all of these other factors that have to be addressed as well, like homework, extracurricular activities, after-school employment, social networking, and electronic media use. So, they're acknowledging that those are very significant factors in all of this as well. And, you know, I had an initial conversation with my class parents, and they're a very wise bunch, and they, that was reflected in their comments, is that we, as you said, we really need to kind of continue to look at our overall school culture and what it is we're expecting out of an entire workday for our kids, as a school and as parents, you know?
Any public questions? And then I have a couple of things I want to throw out.
So, any questions that anybody has in the audience?
Obviously, we're pretty early.
Yep. So, would you mind coming over?
It was on the sports injury. There we go.
I just wanted, this is, I think, in the same study, it's the American Academy of Pediatrics. It was at their national convention, and they said that by making later times, 68% students were 68% less likely to be injured than athletes who slept less. So, they, and they said some, a lot of the schools actually had better team performance. They did better with the later time. So, that's a thought, too. The other thing is, there's another study that said 70% decline in teen accidents when they started later. And there's increase in academics and everything else you said, but as far as sports go, hey, if they're rested, they could perform, even if they have an hour less of practice or squeeze it in. But I think that's important. We have to remember to try to keep these kids healthy, too, and that's what this might do.
So, I just have one question that just keeps coming up for me, is that if a committee is formed, will there be a physician on that committee? So, someone that is, you know, always able to speak to the medical side of things and not, I find that sometimes when we all just talk about what we feel, it can be very non-productive when this is really, you know, information and statistical information that's clinical and medical in nature, so.
Any other questions? Any other questions to share?
So, basically, at lunch today, a couple of me and a couple of, like, my friends, including these two over here, were kind of just, like, tossing around the idea, and I think that Mr. Henderson's point came up a couple of times with my friend Steven, actually. He said, "If it's going to start later, we might be more inclined to just go to bed later," which, is that really, does that really have a purpose? But I just figured that that was some student representation. Thanks.
There's three websites, and I'm going to make sure that we post these, that I think are worth taking a look at from the public's perspective and the board's perspective and everybody else who's interested. One of them's the American Academy of Pediatrics. It's www.aap.org. That's where the actual study is and the detailed study, which really gives you some excellent information. There's also something called the National Sleep Foundation, which is sleepfoundation.org. And they also give you some very good direction and guidelines as to how to frame this as a conversation to your community. And then there's another one, which is kind of fascinating, and I spent a couple hours on it this morning, and I wasn't planning on it, but it's called startschoollater.net, and it's a not-for-profit advocacy group that is advocating for this. They've got, I think, 32 chapters around the country. There's a chapter in Westchester County, there's a chapter in Rockland County, and the head of it is a director of pediatrics at Greenwich Hospital. And they have an enormous amount of information, of case studies, examples, templates, petition letters, you name it. This is a phenomenal site if you just want to kind of get educated. And on it, there's a great study that was done by the Ulster County School Board Association and SUNY New Paltz in August of 2014, which gives you some really good logistical information about some of the things that all these guys were talking about. I'll make sure that we post all of these, but they're definitely worth taking a look at. Also, the superintendent of South Orange Town in Rockland County is speaking at Rockland Bosse's in December, and he's giving a talk on this, as to why he did it and what he's learned as the outcomes. If anybody had an interest in that, I'm going to try to go. It's at 9:00 in the morning on December 3rd. But there's a lot of information out there as to what people's experiences are. And I think, prior to deciding whether we think this is a good idea to proceed with a committee or whatever, I think we need to just absorb some of the information and the facts. And it would probably be a good idea to maybe just revisit this topic, let's say, a month from now, and just say, all right, you guys have all heard this, and this scheduling outline, I thought, was fabulous, because it just shows you the complexities of what the scheduling is like at Howland. And then just come back 30 days from now and say, all right, we read everything. Do we think this is something that we should entertain or not? What I think is a good idea, if we just all digested this information over the course of the month, revisited the next workshop meeting, and then really have a little bit more of an intelligent conversation and say, yes, we agree with the science, no, we don't agree with the science, we understand that there's logistical issues, and do we want to proceed? And if we do want to proceed, in what capacity do we want to proceed? There's an awful lot going on at Howland right now. We've got a new superintendent, we've got a strategic plan that's starting, we've got bonfires that seem to keep popping up all the time that we have to keep putting out, and, you know, do we want to take this project on right now? So, those are some of the things I think I would suggest that we digest and revisit a month from now. I'm personally not ready to say, start a committee and who's on it. But I think I am honest to say that this is a good thing for kids, and I think we at least should take a look at it. So, that's my thoughts. And I don't know if the board has any other thoughts before we...
Yeah, I was just going to offer up the international perspective, because I gather it's, this is nationwide. High school traditionally has started at 7:30 or thereabouts. My wife tells me that her high school always started at 7:30. In UK, it's, you start at 9:00. From elementary through high school, you start at 9:00 and you finish at 4:00 p.m. So, you know, I just throw that in, just to let people know that different parts of the world do things differently.
I'd also like to let you know that one of our neighbors, Hen Hud, is also in the process of taking a look at this question. And one of the doctors who is on that committee that you were discussing actually lives in Hen Hud and is helping to move this process along. So, if we do go into the study, I think that we will have regular conversations with looking at the research that they have, they will be looking at our research, we'll be taking a look at the potential for consultants or other experts to come in, and we'll kind of piggyback on that together. So, there is an opportunity there as well, if that's what we choose to do.
Okay. Any other board comments before we dismiss the panel?
So, it sounds like it's kind of indisputable, I think, for all of us, that more sleep is a good idea, you know? So, I guess my question is, beyond the changing of the start time, are there things that we can do, you know, right now to encourage more sleep at home? Is there, is that happening already amongst parents, amongst the wellness committee? You know, turning off the devices at a certain time, TV's off at a certain time? You know, what's happening right now, and is it even feasible to have that stuff happen amongst heavily scheduled teenagers? I don't know. But I wonder if we can say, hey, more sleep, make sure you don't have as many sports injuries, and it allows your body to recover, so how about athletes get to sleep?
How old are your kids?
Yeah.
How old are your kids?
Yeah, no, young, and that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking, like, what's happening right now? Is there anything that can happen besides a different start time?
We're all friendly around here.
Having seen the slides, I realize how complicated this is, and we have to be practical, but I just want to say, if there's anything that can budge, my kids don't do sports, but they do drama. And with a 12- and 15-year-old, for example, one is still waiting for me to take her home now. I appreciate the fact that the school tries to accommodate kids who are in sports who also want to be in the plays. That usually means a couple of hell weeks, however, for the drama kids. I would absolutely, on a personal level, tell my kid she has to choose if she's in a sport and the musical, because these kids in the play don't even leave school sometimes till 9:00, 10:00 o'clock. In, for example, working family households or single-parent households, I can't ferry her back and forth. She lives in the top of East Mountain Road, so she'll have to stay after and wait for rehearsal to start at, say, 7:00 or 6:00 p.m., and then she's not done till 9:00 or 10:00. So, one thing we could do, and I say this, you know, worrying that my kid's going to feel, you know, I've ruined her chances of getting in the next play, but, you know, because I know it's hard for the people who do the drama coaching and the music. One thing we might do as a school, though, is encourage them to have the kids choose. If there's a conflict between sports and the arts, you know, pick one, so they all can rehearse right after school.
Any other questions?
Can I just, real quick, go back to Jen's question? This is something that's on the wellness agenda. It came up at the beginning of the school year in terms of, the study came out, and of course, it was something that was brought up for further discussion throughout the school year. So, I think I'm happy, and Joe represents the board at the wellness committee, to bring it back to the wellness committee, just in terms of logistics for now, not to dissect the whole process, but just if there is some maybe outreach now that maybe the wellness can take a look at in terms of putting stuff out there. So, we can definitely bring it back to the wellness if that's what we, in terms of stuff for now.
Okay. So, are we okay with digesting for 30 days, and I'll send out some of the stuff that I dug up, and we'll post it, and the community can digest, and I'm sure Facebook will be on it. And, you know, we'll revisit it and do a little due diligence from some of the other schools that have done it, you know, get a board perspective, get superintendent's perspectives. But from everything that I've read, it's a long process, and it's a long process for a reason, because it is complex.
Well, thank you to our dedicated panel.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That was education. I thought it was good. It's obviously extremely complicated, but I think it's a good conversation. All right, so let me defer to Dr. Bowers for their superintendent's report.
I have to get to my page. Sorry. We had a very active last few weeks. We had two superintendents conference days, actually, three days, in which our faculty went through three days of training, the first day and a half of small group conversations, looking at what we are going to do within the next few weeks, next few months, and next few years as a school community. And we are, we were talking about our discovery process. We ended our discovery process, creating goals for our school community to meet for the next, probably, six months before we come back together for another conversation. So, that was very enlightening. We did finish our discovery process. Our information will be put to use when we have a discussion in probably the latter part of January, when we begin our strategic plan. So, it's all kind of rolling in together. We will be talking later on an ongoing communication regarding the offer received for our land that is presently on the market, and there was an additional offer, and we will be discussing that a little later in this executive session. And just kind of an FYI, we are reactivating our building and grounds committee, and we have had a number of issues, as you know, that started from the summer and have kind of continued through the year, where we've looked at modulators, and we've looked at cracked ceilings, and we've looked at a number of other issues. And so, we are going to be reactivating our building and grounds committee. We're going to create kind of a systemic plan of what we need to do district-wide, and we're going to ask all our building and grounds people to come together, look at what we consider an immediate need, which we would consider year zero, we're going to look at the next five years, and pretty much determine what needs to be done at different times within the next five-year period. We have had too many surprises, and we want to make sure that that doesn't continue, so we're going to be as systematic as possible and get as much information as we can. So, that's where we are.
Okay. And just for the public, on board docs, you'll see that there's a copy of the offer that was placed on the James Pond property, along with all the terms and conditions. There's a couple of legalities that we need to get clarified on, but it's all right there on the letter. You know, it was at the asking price. And, you know, there's some issues with it that I think, you know, we'll just have to sift through, but it's all there if anybody wants to take a look at it. I know one thing that I would love to see happen, if we could, is if there's a way that we could retain and carve out some section of the front property as it leads into James Pond for the education center and create some kind of, I'll call it passive parking, not a grandiose parking lot, but something that maybe could accommodate 20 cars or so, because I think parking's an issue that we have to deal with, and that's something that we're going to deal with at the building and grounds level. So, to me, that's an ideal situation, if we can make that happen. And then just on the building and grounds thing, just from a logistical standpoint, back in September, we appointed me as the board liaison to it. It's probably a good idea if we had a second person as well, and I know Peter had expressed an interest. He's been on building and grounds before, and he's got that analytical mind that everybody wants, that nobody necessarily wants to listen to all the time. But it's a good to have. So, I think it would be a good idea if Peter was on that committee as well.
We would appreciate that.
And I know some community members who I've spoken to have expressed an interest as well. And I think there's a bunch of things that we can help with, and that committee has a good history in this district. I've been on it for many, many, many years, and it's led to a lot of things around here that has just made the process easier to make decisions on. Their advisory... They are advisory, they're not decision-making, and they just make it easier for the superintendent and the board. And with the help of the facilities director, it's a good situation. It's got us the turf field, it got us the field, this fencing around the playground. It turned a mud pile on the elementary blacktop into a workable playground. It's done an enormous amount in the many years, and I think it'd be a good idea if we got it back on the tilt again.
I agree.
So.
Don't forget the heating, Joe.
Heating, monolith solar, there's a whole bunch of things that, you know, I'll throw out there once we get going with it. But I'd like to see if, you know, we'd want to have Peter on it, and if you guys are okay with that.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Welcome, Peter. Any other questions for Dr. Bowers? Many of you guys? No? Communication from the public on anything we've spoken about? No? Okay. We have a letter from the Putnam Community Cares Coalition. They're doing a kickoff meeting, which was by invitation only tomorrow at the North Highlands Firehouse from 3:00 to 4:30. I know myself, Dr. Bowers, and I think Jen are going from Haldane. And it was an invitation, I believe, that was sent to an enormous amount of so-called stakeholders in the community. So we'll find out what that's all about tomorrow. It was discussed at the wellness committee meeting yesterday as well, and there's two reps from the wellness committee on that. So we'll report back once we have a little bit more on that. Consent agenda, H1, minutes, November 4th. Any questions? No? Okay. Unfinished business, I1. We've been talking about some policy.
I'll read a motion for minutes.
Motion to accept minutes, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we accept a minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update. Some research, I guess, was done.
Yeah, we said we would talk about this on the second, so, but I just asked to put it on, because, just to let you know what we'll be bringing. I spoke with Jen and Dr. Bowers, and so we're going to bring some comparable rates of various number of tests, what BOSI's charges as compared to what local people charge, and this way we can see, you know, do some comparison. But if you go on, if you just Google, like, independent evaluation, school board, policy New York, you'll see that a lot of school districts have specific dollar values of, like, they list all the tests that would be out there, and they actually do max no more than, you know, X amount of dollars on it. So there's a lot of examples of boards doing that. So that's what we're going to bring. Jen, is that still enough time by December 2nd, do you think?
We've heard back from a couple places. But it might take longer with the Thanksgiving weekend, so maybe I'll update you.
And if necessary, we can put it on the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know if there's anything overly pressing that.
Yeah, no.
We don't have the information, then let's just wait until we get the information. Okay, good. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Jen. I2. We spoke at the last meeting regarding the winter track program, and they're escalating numbers of participants, which is a good thing. And I guess we're going to talk a little bit about it. Tom, you want to? Sure.
Just, you want an update on our numbers?
Yeah, how are we doing?
Currently, we're about, you know, with soccer ending and volleyball ending, we're probably between 55 and 58 members.
Okay. So we're pretty much right where we were.
Yeah.
Okay.
And how many did you think we had last year, Tom?
Last year in winter, we had approximately 35, 35 to 40. We think they ended at 35. We had, yeah, that's what it was.
One coach was adequate to cover the number.
Well, last year, we had a volunteer teach, or teach, one of our teachers volunteered, Ms. McAvoy, who's no longer with us. So now we have just Coach McConville running it.
What can you attribute the increase of participation to?
I think because the, about four or five years ago, the numbers were low. We had a consistency, and when we hired a new coach, kids started to become more on a consistent basis. There was a little more commitment, and then that's basically carried on in spring and winter. Had a very successful spring season. Kids really enjoyed participating. So that's kind of spread the word. Now winter's come along, and boom, the number shot right up. You know, it's a good thing, obviously. We don't offer a lot of, not a lot of options in the winter. Either basketball, boys' and girls' basketball, or track. So I think that's a plus.
I know I spoke to a couple of kids who participated, and they're somewhat new to it, and they're participating because of the exercise. It's a chance to stay in shape for possibly a spring sport, where in the winter, you know, you have a tendency to not. And I know parents are encouraging kids to keep busy, because busier kids do better in school, and, you know, that's just the fact.
Like you said, the studies show a lot of things regarding that.
Right.
But, and I think having, until it snows, a new facility helps out a lot, too.
Yep. And then there was the question of finances. If you guys want to elaborate on that, how would we pay for it?
Yeah, I know that we talked to Ann about the different places that we would look to support this request. And one of the things I thought would be helpful, Tom, if you could just give us some ideas of different ways that you've been saving money, so if we needed to figure out and put things together, we had the opportunity to do so.
Okay. You know, one of our big things that we've done on a consistent basis, I guess, for about two years, is we no longer provide transportation to scrimmages. We've designed, which is, you know, if players are to go to a scrimmage, they have to, you know, provide their own transportation. That's one way we've saved. We know currently, over the last, this year especially, is we don't have as many, as much transportation to St. Basil's as we've had in the past, obviously. We're allowed to, you know, more practice time here on campus, and at Mayor's Park has allowed us to save some money. Same thing with Garrison. Whenever we, I think my first year, over the last few years at least, we've only provided for modified sports, when we have a merger, we've only provided transportation to, to the site, and then the parents need to pick up. So we've saved some money transportation-wise. I know since I've started here, what I've instituted is kind of a rotation process for new uniforms. So what that's done is increased our inventory, meaning now, if a team wants new uniforms, you know, it's a four- to five-year cycle. Instead of, you know, so you're saving money over time each year. So I think gradually, each year, things have, you know, those are ways that we're saving money, basically.
So can you accommodate this expense within this year's sports budget?
Yes, I did meet with Ann, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think a good thing is, if we can create that, and I call it an entrepreneurial mindset, of them managing their departments, and if they see some light at the end of the tunnel by being creative, to where they can accommodate another 40 kids in a sport, I think that's a good methodology and mindset to instill in a public institution. Because I know in a lot of public institutions, it's, you spend your budget, because if I don't spend my budget, it's gone. And Tom does a great job, I think, in that entrepreneurial piece. And, you know, the Booster Club's kicking into it, and I think if we can do more of that, I think the drama department's doing a phenomenal job along those lines. And if we can do that across the whole board, that's what people want.
Yeah, when you bring up the Booster Club, I mean, what they've done, obviously, what we, we don't, we don't want them buying uniform, you know, we basically give the bare essentials, and the Booster Club is there to kind of support that. You know, the Booster Club, underneath the Booster Club, you have each association. So there's a lot of moving parts in that. So we try and use the Booster Club for, for things that are going to benefit most of our, or all of our athletes, instead of just, you know. And mostly, individual associations provide fundraisers to raise money for their teams. Where, that's where you see the gear come from, and, you know, you see a lot of things. That's all through their individual associations.
Thank you.
Good. So you guys good with it?
I'm good.
What do you guys think?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Do we have to take any official action to add an assistant coach?
Well, we'll have to, yes, you have to let us know that you approve it, and then we'll give you the name.
Yeah, we have to advertise it. Okay.
Right. Okay. So take it to the next step?
Yeah.
Good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, I3. Slow down, exclamation point, exclamation point. We don't have backup documents on this one, but basically, this came from a conversation. There's no attachment. This came from a conversation we had last week at our regular meeting while we were doing the agenda, and I just thought that there's a lot going on. And we have high hopes with this project-based learning, and we have high hopes with the strategic plan. I just thought it would be a good idea if we maybe just, and part of this leadership-on-the-line conversation that we're having in our book read, is, you know, you do get to a point where sometimes you just need to pause, stand on the balcony, look down, and kind of reflect on what we've done so far. And that's really what this is kind of about. I think we're at this point where we've done a lot, there's a lot going on, there's been a lot of things thrown at us unexpectedly, and we've handled them all fine. But maybe just from here on, for the next short period, take a little more of a methodical approach to some of the items that we're dealing with, some of the policy reviews, you know, take an extra pause and say, you know, is this really what we want? Do we want to bring more people into the conversation in that regard?
Right. And what we were, what we're hoping to do is, we want to make sure that what we do, we put, we give it our all, we put the amount of time and effort into it that's needed, so we do it well. And we don't want to race through and do a job that may not necessarily support what it is that we're trying to accomplish. So we are all on the same page. It's time to slow down and to measure our steps, so everything that we do is done well.
Yeah, and the section that we read in the book this week was really quite timely. This is the book that we're reading collectively. We all get swept up in the action, particularly when it becomes intense, and we need most to pause. Self-reflection does not come naturally. So I think this is a good moment for us to, a lot's happened in the last few months.
Yes, it has.
A lot of unanticipated activity. So I think a moment for self-reflection would be a good thing.
Yeah, and it's all good. I mean, you have a new superintendent, you have a new school community, you have a new school board person who's old ways and old-schoolish, and you've got, you know, a lot of stuff going on. So, you know, maybe a little more methodical approach on certain things, and it can't hurt. So that's what that means. Slow down isn't from Robert's Rules of Order or anything technical, it's just my version of pause button.
And I'm certainly glad we've initiated the conversation on the school start time. But as you were saying earlier, it's something that we just have to let play out over, over an extended period, and just make sure that we're moving appropriately. So I'm glad we started the conversation, and I hope that we'll continue the conversation. But we certainly shouldn't anticipate any quick action on this.
Good. Okay. Any other slowdowns? What's that? Communication from the public on anything? Anything? Yeah, sure.
I, I just feel like I have to say one thing. I really do wish that when, when there's a request made for an assistant coach in athletics, that it would be as easy as it was this evening to get the approval for the monies. Anybody who volunteers their time to coach our students and our athletes does it for a love of the students and a love of the, love of the sport. And it's just something that's caused some tension in the past, and I'm glad that that tension will not be there this winter. So again, I just, I hope that this is a sign of things to come, and that when there is a safety issue, or even just the benefits that come from having a qualified assistant coach with our students, that they get the recognition of a paycheck as well as just the title. So just thank you for making that happen for this winter season.
Thank you. Any other questions? New business. K1, BOSI's board member special election. We've spoken at a couple of meetings. There's a vacancy on the BOSI's board. It's made up of component districts, I think there's 18 of them. So we have to vote tonight on one of two candidates. We've talked about this, we've read about it, we've done a whole bunch of stuff. I am going to make a motion to support Mr. Douglas Glickert, who's from the Peekskill District. And I'll just reiterate from what we've spoken about previously, I just think he's got a well-rounded background, and I think would represent the BOSI's board well. So do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Well, I mean, first, I mean, I think we can all appreciate, anyone who sits on a school board and is willing to sit on another school board, okay? Thank you to both those gentlemen that are willing to do that. So, which makes it hard to choose one, but I think I echo Joe's comments.
Okay. That's a very good point, Evan. And I also agree, so.
Okay, Ms. Clark? We are done discussing. We think that we all are in favor of Glickert. What do we do now?
Would you like to say all in favor?
Sure.
Do you want to roll call, or just?
No, I think we just, all in favor of the Haldane Board of Education supporting Mr. Douglas Glickert for the open vacancy on the BOSI's Putnam Northern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Mr. Glickert has Haldane's vote? And you'll process whatever we have to process? Thank you. That is a thankless job, when you think about it, because you don't even have to direct correlation of your own kids or your own community's kids. I mean, that's a tough one, but, so. K2, approval of contract for asbestos. We spoke at the last meeting with regards to some unexpected asbestos issues in certain areas. I know Peter and I did a tour with Mike Towery and Dr. Bowers just to see it firsthand and get a little more well-vested in what we're doing. So is there anything you want to add to this? Dr. Bowers, Mike's not here.
No, but I know that you had some questions. Peter, were you able to get those clarified, or are they still lingering?
I just want to be sure that we're tackling as much as we can within the constraints of the environmental laws.
Yes, and it's my understanding, after talking to Michael, if we tried to increase the scope that we were discussing the other day, it would have moved from a small job category to a big job category, and there would be a number of other things that would go into it. One of the other things that we are in the process of doing is, we will get somebody trained so they can perform small jobs. And so if we need to make modifications of the surrounding areas, we can do that with the person who is trained.
And I brought up, I just asked a question at the last meeting about the closing of the building, and I can see in the contract that it's 25 feet, and it's within OSHA and everything, so.
And it's because it is a small job as opposed to a large job, and we don't have to represent, there's usually a 10-day wait time where we communicate that to the public if it's a large job, but in a small job, that's not the requirement.
Right.
And when will we execute the training for our own staff so they can do the smaller type of things? When's that going to happen?
Michael is in the process of organizing that now.
Because I think that's important.
Yes.
And the funds for this, I think we had some conversation as to where it would come from.
Ann, you want to talk a little bit about the roof project?
Sure. There's, from the roof masonry project of a couple of years ago, there's still a balance of unspent funds, which is about $44,000 in that, in that part of the capital fund account. And it recommended that we take this expenditure from that, because between the asbestos abatement and the testing, the air quality monitoring, it's going to be about $22,000. And it would definitely be within, you know, coming from the capital project, it would really put a, would really hamper our operations budget if it was taken from the general fund. really put a, would really hamper our operations budget if it was taken from the general fund.
Okay. So the plan is to do as much of the area in the gym area as we can without getting to the next level of requirements, right?
Correct.
And the next level of requirements requires more posting, more wait times, more whatever else, regulation. So we'll do up to that amount, and the funds will come out of the, what do you do, a transfer to the general fund? Is that how it works? You don't have to get up.
No, I would just, we would just pay the expenditures out of the capital fund.
Oh, okay.
It would not even come from general, okay? As long as you authorize it.
And at this point, the rest of the work that needs to be done in there and any other work throughout the building that, or through the buildings that need to be done will go into the plan that we're starting to create for the Building and Grounds Committee.
We're going to be busy building and grounds. Okay. Do we need to motion this and approve it? Okay. Do I have a motion for contract for the asbestos payment? K2?
Motion.
A second.
Discussion further?
No, it sounds, I mean, this is essential that we get this done. It sounds like an entirely appropriate use of the monies in the capital fund, so I think let's move ahead.
And it was Thanksgiving weekend, right?
Yes.
Okay. Those kids would be around. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Communication from the public again? Yep. Mr. Carroll?
Regarding the work in the auditorium, we spent lots of time and effort putting in new facilities in there over the last couple of years. And it's my understanding that if any fabric surfaces get exposed to airborne asbestos, they have to be discarded. And I'm particularly worried about my new curtains and my new fabric panels that we put in the back of the room. So just, I'm sure it's on the plan already, but make sure that they don't have to get thrown away, please. Thank you.
Yes, and that's why we're doing it next week, so it doesn't become a problem.
So we'll remind Mike that Seamus's panels and curtains can't get touched, because if I have to listen to him. Make a footnote of that, put that on camera, please. Okay. Anything else new from anybody?
Not from me.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the employment history of a certain individual, a student issue, and land sale. We're not going to take any action, and we're not going to come back and take action, so you guys can go home peacefully. And thank you for coming.
Have a good evening.
A second.
Second?
Oh, I guess we have to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
See you, Tom.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Good night.